People that you are teacher of the month, not year, but month, as I made a mention last time. But we're grateful for you and we thank you and listen, your wife being here, we're grateful for her too. Behind every good man is a good woman and we're grateful for her as well. But thank you so much for all that you do and for all the work that you put in to our students' lives. Thank you.
You too.
Can't get out of it.
Everybody has them upside down, alright?
Um, Ms. Martinez, could you step a little bit? There you go. Alright, ready? One, two. Just one more. Two.
Parents come on up if you want to get closer.
Or mine.
Or spouses.
One, two.
Alright, y'all mind shaking the board's hands? Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
For your hard work. Congratulations.
I was a theater writer.
Great period.
Well, congratulations. Here's my, here's my pen.
Okay.
Congratulations, Ms. Martinez. Thank you so much. Next, we have some recognitions for Forestville's ISD's cross-country academic off-state honors. Coach Wars, would you please come forward and present these to us?
Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Gilstrap. I'd like to take the time to thank you for the opportunity to come recognize our student athletes. What an honor to recognize this group. This is probably one of the hardest working, dedicated group of student athletes that we have. If you've ever been on campus at dark thirty, doesn't matter what time of the year, whether it's winter or summer, they're the ones that are running. So, and when I say running, they're running all over the place. So, in the weeds, out in woods, across the roads. And it doesn't matter if it's 100 degrees outside or if it's 20 degrees and it's dark, they're going to be out there running. So, really proud of them. As most of you have been able to hear from us over the last year through the opportunity you created to recognize our student athletes, our athletic department places a strong emphasis on student portion of being a student athlete. While their accomplishments on the field are very impressive, they are the boys' district champion and the boys' and girls' team were regional qualifiers this year. It's only overshadowed by their work in the classroom. And so, if you'll allow me to introduce our head coach, Jonas Rodriguez, who actually runs with a cross-country team. He'll come up here and say a few words.
Yes, we had two seniors, John Villarreal and Brooklyn Chavez. They were our only two seniors. Brooklyn, she's with the, I think it's the region band tonight, so we know how important band is, so she could not miss that. So, she's there, but our two seniors, it's definitely a good accomplishment when both of them get recognized for academics. I've had Brooklyn and John since they were in seventh grade cross-country. So, the fact that they could stick it out for six years and again, not only excel, you know, on the field of play, but in the classroom just speaks wonders. You know, John had the great opportunity of sticking it out through hard years. And like Coach said, he was one of the ones that led them to district championship. And Brooklyn Chavez, the girl's success would not be where it is without her as well. So, these, the two seniors that we have has just, they've done tremendous jobs at building the programs that we have and they're so good because of these two examples that we have. So, they did a really good job and I'm very proud to have both of them on our team.
I was one of those parents that was dropping off L. South Elementary and seeing you kids run, like you said, cold. And my grandson had asked me, "Why are they running? It's cold." I said, "Well, that's part of their deal, make them stronger." And because you have to have endurance and it's like it's running all the time. And Coach, I admire you for running with them. I'm not very good at running, so I just walk if what I do. But I want to compliment also on your grades, it's very important. This is what you've learned and in budgeting your time, when other kids go school, are school and stuff like that, you're out here running. So, that just shows your dedication and how well you love your sport and your academics. Thank you.
Congratulations.
That's on what go on.
Ready? One, two. One, two. Here.
Go ahead. Coach, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for pushing. Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Now, unless you just want to stay for the exciting part of the meeting, you can, but you're dismissed and thank you all for coming and for the recognition and for the honor and privilege we've had to recognize you.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Forgot to mention that he requested an Adams family in San Antonio if he got a passport.
Wow. Wow.
Good evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you for coming, guys. Thanks for coming.
Okay, now, Ms. Petrie, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir.
Alright. We will now swear in returning Board Member Marshall Clear. Central Office Specialist Mrs. Tackett will now administer the oath of office.
I'm Marshall. Raise your right hand and speak after me. I do solemn, I state your name.
I am Marshall Clear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Forestville ISD Board of Trustees.
Of Forestville ISD Board of Trustees.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will do and will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God.
Alright, congratulations.
Congratulations. So, Board Members, just to recall, last month, we did canvass the election. Mr. Clear was unopposed, but he was unable to attend, he sworn in, so that's why we had to swear him in.
Next on the agenda, reports and updates. Dr. Gilstrap, Central Office Superintendent.
Yes, sir, thank you. As you are aware, last Tuesday, we did have an incident in and around the high school campus, which required the high school to go into a lockdown. We also had to place South Elementary and the middle school into secure status during that incident. And so, just want to first of all, thank Dr. Farnsworth, his staff at the high school for their quick reaction. They took action immediately once they were informed of incident and secured that campus without hesitation. And so, thank you to him and his staff and our officers for notifying us and then securing what we had to do. What really goes is we drill a lot of things. We spend a lot of time on drills whenever we're talking about our standard response protocol and our students knew how to react, our teachers knew how to respond, and they took immediate action. They took it serious. Obviously, I can only imagine the tone in Dr. Farnsworth's voice whenever he came on the P.A. But I can assure you that the students knew that it was a concern and they had to take immediate action, so they did so. We did conduct an after-action report following the incident, in the days following the incident, just while it was fresh on everyone's mind. And so, while we did a great job of securing it, we also have some areas that we identified we've always want to improve in. And we do a lot of those drills and we have after-action meetings after those drills. It's not too often you actually have to implement it in a real-life situation. So, we want to make sure we take advantage of that and see how can we can improve. And we did identify some areas that we want to make sure that we're looking at as we move forward. But I do want to thank our community, our families, our staff, our students, for all their patience while we were working through that. During the incident, obviously, our focus is on securing staff and students. That they can't do it out with communities and families and things like that. So, this incident, we were not in that lockdown for long. In fact, by the time we started pushing out information, we got the all clear. And so, which is, which is very good, we were very fortunate. The other thing we want to do is recognize our three FFA teams. They competed at the state contest in Huntsville this past weekend. We'll be recognizing those students and their sponsors at a future board meeting. But as always, we congratulate them and their success and they represent our school district with pride and with respect. And so, we want to recognize and say congratulations to them. We are still looking for a board meeting time to recognize our Mighty Tiger Band. They obviously did a great job in participating all the way to the state level. As, as he referenced, we are having, I believe it's a district or a regional contest today. So, they were unable to attend tonight because they're already into their concert season and so, solo and ensemble time. But we are, we are going to work out a time to get with them. Just a little update on our calendar, committee calendar for 23-24 instructional calendar. That is still in the works. Our committee has met to really look at what's important for them. They get feedback from their campus and then they come back to that committee. They are down to two calendars and those two calendars are going to be shared with staff to get a survey back from them and also with our district improvement committee, our D E I C committee. And so, they'll be reviewing that. One of the key components is especially this time of year, in the late spring and also in the middle of the fall semester, you get into those stretches where you don't have some time off, whether it's students or with staff. And so, one of the specific things that we're looking to incorporate in this is at least one day a month is a district holiday for staff, for students, everyone. And at least one day a month will be incorporated as a professional development or a staff work day. So, it'll be another day off for students. We feel like it's very important to make sure that routine is in there every month to give, give everyone a break during some of the times that we're going through. So, that calendar, we will have another report in January from Dr. Wade and that, that calendar should be coming to the board in February for approval. So, we should have it finalized by then. Just briefly, last month, we did talk about the budget amendment that has been recommended by the finance committee. That budget amendment was for $300,000 and that was in order to address some areas that we're always looking to continue improving on. One is security projects. We have teacher refresh devices, which are our laptop computers for staff, and then our vehicle fleet refresh. So, whenever I say vehicle fleet, that's our non-bus fleet. We call it the white fleet. So, that's maintenance trucks, police vehicles, suburban, we do have suburban. Basically, those other vehicles that are not necessarily used to transport students. You can see a brief breakdown there. Just understand that those items are not final and those costs are still estimates, but we will have a detailed with some finer numbers and some bids to look at in January. But in total, you can see what those total out to. Some of those security projects could be funded by pending security grant whenever T E A does decide to release that. And they've already announced it, but they haven't released the details on applying for it, things like that. So, once that comes available, we may be able to do some reimbursement with that. And obviously, going into the legislative session, there could be some additional funds that come available from the state. These are things that we need to make sure we're moving forward with in a timely manner, so we want to take advantage of them now. Superintendent Evaluation Tool has been provided to you along with the portfolio. That manila envelope does contain the evaluation tool. And so, if you can complete that and return that in the sealed envelope to either Alyssa or directly to Dr. Odom by next Friday, the 16th, that will give Dr. Odom time to collect those and gather all that information prior to our meeting on January the 9th, which will be the date for our regular January board meeting. And that's when we'll conduct the superintendent evaluation, the summative evaluation. So, if you can get those back to him, that would be great. Now, the Teaching Learning Department has moved to the former theater building. The next moves for reopening this facility, during the Christmas break, we will be relocating a couple of classrooms, two teachers and two classrooms at the high school in order to move some of our assessment staff over to the high school and get them located near the rest of the special education office. And then, after Christmas break, we will start focusing on moving what I call the operations. Mr. Schroller, H R, myself, down to a certain area of this building so that we can then start renovating this facility into an early childhood center for pre-K. And that'll be for the 23-24 school year. Ms. Angle has already contacted T E A. We have a campus I D. number now. It is still labeled as under construction until we open up this campus. But we're really excited about it. We feel like it's going to be a need to alleviate some of that pressure off of the two elementary campuses. And once again, it's going to buy us some time so that we can see what we want to do as a community in moving forward in the future. Also, coming up shortly, Alyssa will be sending out a survey like we did last year with some potential dates for a Team of Eight training in February. So, I want to try to get some proposed dates out to you. Whenever you get that survey, please respond. If none of those dates are good, give us a date that may work for you. The key to Team of Eight training is all of us have to be there in attendance in order for it to count as a Team of Eight. We can do some other training, but in order to meet the qualifications for Team of Eight, we all have to be present. Do have a couple of, a few dates there, upcoming events this month, specifically in the concerts at elementary and also the band concerts at the high school, middle school. And then, you'll see a few items listed there for future board action at the next meeting. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, sir. Gilstrap. Next on the agenda is item number five, action items. First action item is consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or discussions on the items in the consent agenda?
Mr. President, move to accept the consent agenda.
I second it.
Mr. Voda makes the motion to accept the consent agenda and Ms. Reed seconds it. Any further questions? Alright, all in the paper, let me know by raising your hand. All opposed? Next action item is to consider approval of foreign exchange student waiver presented by Dr. Wade.
Good evening, President Odom, Dr. Gilstrap, board members. Forestville High School currently has 17 foreign exchange students. That significant increase, because I'm trying to remember how much we've had in the past, but it's been way less than that. But that has caused some scheduling difficulties at the high school. All of those students are required to be enrolled in U.S. history and that they also have electives. Currently, those students are taking up 60 elective seats. So, that's the equivalent of about three class periods if you think about that. Some of the additional challenges this brings is that those students are not always English proficient. So, we're required to give them an English proficiency exam. And then, if they don't pass the English, then we're required to provide them with emergent bilingual services, which typically by the time you get a kid at high school, they've, they've exited out. But anyway, that's another requirement for those students. So, the district is able to request a waiver from the Texas Education Agency to limit the number of foreign exchange students when those admissions would require students to compete for educational services and resources. So, the district is requesting that the board approve the T E A waiver application to limit the number of foreign exchange students to a maximum of eight each year beginning next school year. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are they coming from all over or specific area or from all over the world that we know?
We've got Germany, we've got Italy.
It's all over.
Yeah.
Okay. Interesting.
And we want to encourage those, we want to accept those, we've had those for a number of years. But to have 17, there are six, eight high schools that don't have 17.
I think the most we had was five.
Yeah. That's about the norm, it's about five.
And talking to a couple of the placement agencies, they have companies that place students. They've just indicated that during COVID, obviously, there were zero. And so, there's been this push for people wanting to do it more and more. And so, one thing led to another, next thing I know, we have 17.
The high school actually contacted me last school year and said, "Hey, we're starting to get an increase. We're starting to get an increase." So, we put some structures in place, an application, a deadline, to try to help facilitate that. And then, Dr. Farnsworth sent me an email, "We got 17." Okay, let's talk a little bit about it.
There aren't any waivers available for the requirements that they have to take?
No, ma'am. They're only here typically for a year and for the most part, they're not going to graduate with us. But if they wanted to, they would actually have to take E O C. tests. But that's not a requirement if they're just here for a year. They do have to be enrolled in U.S. history.
How did you get to the number of eight?
Well, the minimum we could ask for is five. Someone suggested 10 and so, we compromised in the middle and got to eight, which is about half, about where we are right now, thinking that that would kind of ease the load.
And eight would work pretty, pretty well?
I think so.
And then, what kind of requirements are we having? Are they having trouble learning English or I know they're, they have to learn or know some English to come over, I'm sure.
Yes, they have to know some, but they may not be proficient. So, we've got to provide them with English as a second language support.
Yeah, if we're having trouble with that.
And what does that support look like?
For the most part, it's just L. strategies in the classroom. But I know the high, we have a local elective credit for English as a second language that we could enroll them in, which would take another section. I mean, we have that for other students as well.
How many, how many exchange students are enrolled in that class?
Well, we don't, we're not offering it right now, but talking about offering it next semester.
So, if you offer it next semester to all the students, then you have to offer it to the foreign exchange students?
Well, it's just if they need the need, if they have a need that they need to be enrolled in that, we would recommend that they would be enrolled.
But as it is right now, it's.
It's just the L. strategies in the classroom.
So, they haven't taken up any extra resources right now? Y'all are just thinking about next year?
They've taken up seats in the classroom because those 60 elective seats could have been given to our local students. So, our students, there's scheduling conflicts for those electives. Let me give you an example. Culinary arts is a very popular one and so, how do we compete with, they've got 17 students that need to take some electives and they're vying for principals classes that our own students want to get into. So, that's the issue.
So, they, so they come in and they're able to bump someone else off the list who's been waiting?
Not necessarily. I'm just saying they're taking up seats. So, whatever the criteria, however it is that the staff, the counselors put them in the seats, that's the issue. We have a limit and not every kid can take electives right now.
And kind of students locally though, can't, shouldn't they have the first choice or that?
You would.
I mean, you would hope so or think so, but.
But what can those students take? They've got to take those principals classes. And so, we had a little struggle at the beginning of the year with all the requests for some classes and do we have enough teachers for those classes and where are we going to move those students to? So, we've had to do some of that.
On a monetary side, do we get compensated at all from the state or anybody?
We get weighted funding for them just like we do any other student. They count for daily attendance.
We just have too many at the, at the.
Yeah. Any other questions? So, the administration recommends the board approve the foreign exchange student waiver application as presented.
I make a motion to accept the administration's recommendation. Mr. Shawrock secondes it. Any further questions, discussion? Okay, all in the paper, let me know by raising your hand. Opposed? Act two. Okay, Dr. Wade will now present and consider approval of a resolution, convi, convene, I can say that, convene the district's health and wellness committee to recommend curriculum.
Yes, sir. So, House Bill 1525 and Senate Bill 9 require that the school health advisory committee, known as the SHAC, review and make recommendations for curriculum about materials for child abuse, family violence, dating violence, sex trafficking, and reproductive health. A new item this year also is that parents are, must have the opportunity to opt in to reproductive health instruction. In the past, it has been an opt-out. So, we say to parents, I'm giving an example, two weeks ahead of time, we're going to conduct this instruction. If you want to opt out, let us know. This year, it's an opt-in. So, parents will have to submit something that I want my students to receive this instruction for us to provide that. Otherwise, they'll have to do an alternate activity. Our district of innovation approved by the board back in March of 2022, allowed for the duties outlined for the SHAC, the school health advisory committee, to be met through other committee structures. And so, the district has created a health and wellness committee to perform this kind of function. So, the required resolution for the committee is in your board packet and it sets forth the requirements that the committee has to hold two public meetings and then bring their recommendation for curriculum to the board for approval by March of 2023.
And these classes, like, would they show, let the kids be aware like of sex trafficking, how they do it? Or we don't know that.
That's what the, the, the board, I've asked for asking the board to authorize the committee to investigate and make a recommendation about what resources we would use for that instruction. Yes, ma'am.
I missed the investigation.
That's okay. So, is that clear? The, the recommendation, the resolution is just authorize the committee to do the work to find the curriculum resources? Any other questions? Alright, then the administration recommends the board approve the resolution as presented.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept?
I move.
Okay, Ms. Reed makes the motion to have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Moon seconds it. Any further discussion or questions? If not, on the paper, let me know by raising your hand. And opposed, a seven to zero. The decision passes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Wade. Next item is to consider approval of personnel presented by Dr. Gilstrap.
Board Members, we do have one contract to recommend. Kim Einman is resigning at, she'll be retiring at Christmas and so. What's that?
She told me 12.5.
And so, she will be retiring at Christmas and we have identified a certified teacher that we want to bring on board to finish out this year. And so, her name is Vette Espinoza. And so, we're recommending her for approval of the contract for the remainder of this school year. It's always key, we know the struggles right now to recruit and retain staff. So, if we can identify. So, if we can identify one and we've got an opening, we need to get, get them on board so that we can get them, if nothing else, we've got them for next year. Also, not for approval, but just for your information, we did get a, a letter of resignation from Jared Shaw. As you know, he won the, the election for Justice of Peace, and so, effective Jan, I believe, January 1. When do they swear? I'm not sure when they swear.
January 1st.
January 1st. He'll be sworn in as J P, so he will be unable to do both positions, just because it's a full-time job. Any questions? If not, the board, or the administration recommends approval of contract as presented.
Okay, we have a motion.
To accept the administration's recommendation.
Assessment, second by Mr. Clear. Any further questions, discussion? If none, all in favor, let me know by raising your hand. Opposed, second.
Who was the second?
Mr. Clear. All right. The board will now convene in the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074 Personnel, 551.076, and 551.089 Liberation Regarding Security Devices and Security Audits. And we will do that at 7:09. We will convene at 7:09 P M.